I call the early meeting of the Anchorage School Board to order. The time is 2:31. All board members are present. We have Mr. Higgins on phone. Is there any objections to approving the agenda as revised? Seeing that the agenda is approved, and the next item is Board Committee Reports, Budget and Audit. Ms. Gess?
Thank you. The Budget and Audit Committee met. You have the notes in your packet, so I won't go over those. Most of our time was spent on the presentation that you will get today. And just to give everyone a heads up, a verbal heads up, in addition to the written, we discussed because of the wonderful progress we're making on the long-range fiscal plan to postpone the budget assumptions right now so we can try to pull those two things together, which isn't something I actually thought we would be able to do this year as well as we may be able to. So, we are gonna work on a new budget calendar, but try to time, and it might make sense, more sense, after you see the long-range financial plan. But I will try to give you an update at the next meeting about when we think we'll have a budget timeline.
Are there any questions? Okay, Tam, Policy.
The Policy Committee, in the last meeting, put everything that had come to our attention as items for potential policy discussion on the table, and we made the decision that we were going to focus on three initially, and that includes MECCAC, the Lottery for Charters, and Health and Wellness. Our next Policy Committee meeting is tomorrow at 9:30 in Room 150. I believe that's the number right next door. And we'll be having a presentation by Lauren Kelsey of the Alaska Tobacco Prevention and Control Program, as well as we have invited Sarah Pebbles of the Alaska PTA Health and Wellness, who is the Chair of that committee, to join us. And it is an open meeting. I also need to put forth for discussion from the, for all the Board, is a recommendation that has been made from the Policy Committee concerning MECCAC. And I want to preface that with saying that it has come to my attention that MECCAC is a longstanding committee, and one that has served well in terms of putting forth the interests of our, the multicultural community and population of our schools. At some times, however, in recent years, I've been made aware that they don't feel that their concerns or their issues have been acted upon or addressed by the Board. In our discussions about MECCAC, therefore, we've talked about how could we empower this Board to, our committee, this Advisory Committee, so that they feel that their needs are being met. And the recommendation is that we change the school, our School Board policy, and move the reporting and the responsibility for the MECCAC to the superintendent's duties. That would be a change in School Board policy to .3.2, duties of the superintendent. And in that realm, also the other committee that reports to the Board, which would be the Student Advisory Board, that we also move that Advisory Board to make them a direct report to the superintendent, and that he handle those. The, part of the justification of that is in that as a governance body, the day-to-day operation of the schools is not in our purview, and therefore that their concerns and their issues would be more readily addressed if they were reporting on a constant and a regular basis to the superintendent. So therefore, this change has been put forth as, for open for discussion today, and we're going to take that up again on September 4th at our policy meeting, and then, based on what we hear and the recommendations that are made by the Board members, then we'll put it on the agenda for the meeting after that. So I'd like to get some feedback from other Board members on that change for MECCAC and SAB.
Questions for the Policy Chair? Again, I'd also like to make note that we are in the process of coming up with something to put on the website for our, each of our committees, in an attempt to become more transparent and allow people to be able to follow our committee process more closely. We're hoping that we will be able to have a link on the School Board page to follow the committees at some point, hopefully soon, as we decide what format we want to use in coming up with that. So, look for that in the future.
And I would add, if I need, one of the things that I discuss with the superintendent is, in his reports to us, if he would make that a part of his reporting item, to give us those updates from SAB and from MECCAC, since we wouldn't be getting them directly during a meeting.
Yes.
So I really feel this is going to improve our communication, and make us more responsive to our community, and help us to institute any of those changes that are in the best advantage of our students.
Thank you. And before we move on in the agenda while we're talking about changes, I just also wanted to note that the 2:30 early meeting is a change, and the last meeting was our very first time, and we were at a table right here, and we're trying something new today by us just sitting in our normal spots. And this may not be ultimately where we end up. We're trying to decide where it feels most right, and so staff and anybody who else who's participating today, if you would like to get back to me later on what you think is the best format, I'd be happy to hear. So, next off-
Ms. Mackey? I had two policy questions. One, you wanted feedback on the policy, and I thought it was simple and clear, so I appreciate that. We are, we are changing the section on the superintendent duties, and something that did not get changed under my purview as President was aligning the duties of the superintendent and Jim's contract. So, I don't think this needs to hold for that, but if that can be a priority issue, I don't think we have any, it won't be controversial, we already voted on the contract, but there's, there are some things that are in that contract that are new duties that aren't in here, and I can help you on that. The other, the question on the priorities, you had said lottery for charters, when we have lots of schools that have lotteries-
I misspoke. Lottery in general.
Okay.
Thank you for correcting me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Special Advisory Reports, and I believe our student advisor is not back to school yet, so we don't have one there. Military Report. Hi, Brian.
The only report, we wanted to thank Dr. Browder for coming to the Community Action Council meeting this last week, and presenting to all the leadership on the military, on the Jay Bear military side, and welcoming them back to school for the year, and introducing himself. And also, they were able while there to do a sort of an immersion or executive exchange type event, where we had a great chance for Colonel Battistelli and Dr. Browder to get acquainted, better acquainted, and to see some of the different facilities, especially some of the technologically advanced weapon simulation type of features and things like that that they have over there, and all the educational implications that those had, that those have. And we're very grateful for him to make, that he could make the time to come out and spend that time with us out there on Jay Bear. And yes, thank you very much.
Thanks. We had good feedback about that as well. Do we have a MECCAC report this afternoon?
Jonathan had a memorial that he had to attend.
Okay. So, we, that brings us to our first Board presentation, which is finalizing the communications plan. Ms. Von Imhoff?
At this time, I would like to defer to Heather.
Thank you to the Board members for getting your feedback on the communications plan to me. I have incorporated the feedback that I received into the latest version of the plan. The comments were minimal in regards to what's in the plan, and that was adding in the senior voice to one of our communications opportunities. And adding in surveys as a community engagement tool. If you look in your packet, there's a list, it's the packet that starts off with suggestions for Board early meeting topics, but if you flip the page, you'll see a list of suggested external communications contacts. And these are suggestions that I received from Board members. And then the next page is suggested article topics, and those are also suggestions that I received from Board members. So, I would like, if there are any questions or concerns, additions or deletions to either of those lists, then please let me know, and I will make those changes. The external communications contacts range from very specific individuals, to specific named groups, to specific types of groups. And that's fine, there's no reason why we can't incorporate all of those in the plan. But again, questions or concerns, let me know. And then suggested article topics, we had a few, we had District Customer Services, for example, listing out the online lunch and activity fee payments, everything that you can get online as a customer service from the district. So grades in attendance via Zangle, testing scores, credit information, our social media outreach, and e-newsletters. And an article on Destination 2020, and of course, that will be our overarching theme for the year. I expect that we will revisit and reference Destination 2020 consistently throughout the year. Budget, the new math program as we progress toward that, Common Core state standards. And then a general comment that the fewer topics that we focus on, the better, and the suggestions there were Destination 2020, the budget, and attendance. So if you have any additions, comments, suggestions on that, I would love to hear them.
Also, Heather, you did start off with meeting with the Daily News, and I don't know if you want to mention that.
We did. Jim and Jeannie, Ms. Mackey and I, met with the editorial board of the Anchorage Daily News, which right now is Frank Gurdervik. And we had a very robust conversation with him. We talked about Destination 2020. We talked about a lot of the initiatives that we have going on, what we're looking forward to tackling in this upcoming year. And he was very receptive. I believe he's planning on writing an editorial based on the conversation that we had. And we have plans to keep those lines of communication open and to keep him included. Obviously, he's, as part of the Daily News, he's already included on all of the press releases that we send, but if there's anything particularly topical, we'll make sure to contact him directly. We had intended to meet with Pat Doherty to talk about the feasibility of a recurring article, however, he is on vacation, an extended vacation for now. And so Ms. Von Imhoff and I plan to meet with him upon his return in about another week, week and a half.
Just as an addition to that, Ms. Mackey, you and I had planned also to meet with Ms. Von Imhoff and Heather, if appropriate, when you all, when we meet, to discuss how we could engage them around some of the communication things.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that the next step is to create a calendar, and I think that Heather was doing that already.
I am. Before I finalize that, I have some suggestions, and actually, the, it's not too far off of the initial communications plan that Natasha was working off of when, in creating this plan, as to what some good dates might be for some of these topics. But what I want to do is finalize the list of suggested article topics and audiences before we actually get that communications out. This way, we can start scheduling in the article topics for specific months, and then once I have that, then I'll work with you to fill in who's going to be the point of contact for those articles, who is available, and what months to meet with which community groups. So I want to make sure that we have our articles and audiences identified before we really start getting into the scheduling.
Thank you. Again, this is a great, great product and process. Couple things, I, I would like to, for the Board to consider, and Jeannie, you and Jim to consider, having communications as one of the early meeting topics, even if there isn't something, just to say, okay, not on where we are with the plan, but to talk about what the theme is, and what are we doing. And I think for me, as a Board member, it helped me stay on message and know what we were talking about that month, and also know where you need us, which kind of goes to the next thing of where do you want us, and when. And everyone knows, you know, my favorite is Dave Stearns, so it's really easy on the way to school. Love to do Dave Stearns. It's the easiest on my schedule, but getting that in, at least for me, getting that scheduled into my time, and knowing what I can do to help, and where you want me, I think it would be great if we could talk about that every two weeks, until we probably get a rhythm, and then it probably will flow naturally.
Sure. That's a good suggestion. So are there, is there any opposition from the Board this afternoon on finalizing the communication plan as it stands right now? Don?
Madam Chairman, I think that's fine. I was just, as I was sitting here listening, you know, people communicate so much now by email, and particularly organizations, you know, the weekly, they send out a notice for their meetings and stuff. And I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate to think about, once a month or something, having a, just a quick little highlight that could go to the President of the Rotary Club downtown, and the, is that in there?
It is on the list.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Good.
So, it appears that we can go ahead and move forward with this. And Natasha, again, thank you for all the work that you put into it, and you too, Heather.
You're welcome. Thank you for your support. So what I will plan to do then is create that planning calendar, and bring it to an upcoming meeting, so that we can begin populating that and start our communications.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. So, item number two, policy discussion regarding call-in. Gretchen?
Great, thank you. In your packets, and I believe Pat emailed to you, is a new memo, and it's, there's a significant change, so please make sure you have the right one in front of you, and it should say Revised 820 on the top. If anyone thinks that this topic is easy to think about, I've gone through probably ten different drafts. It is immensely complicated, and so my apologies for the late-minute change, but someone made me aware that I had a significant error in some of my logic regarding what happens at the Legislative and the Assembly level. So, in front of you is, for discussion, is the concepts, and I haven't talked to the attorneys, because I don't want to get into language before we've had a conversation about concepts. A concept regarding quorum, and calling in, and excused and unexcused absences. And this really came out of, for me, two recognitions in the last three months. One of them, in the last year and a half that I've been serving on the Board, at two times, we had two members calling in. And the second time that happened, didn't happen on the first time, but the second time that happened, it really highlighted to me that the risks that the Board has, that everyone would call in, and that we had no quorum to say that we had to have a certain number of people here. And also, the professionalism of this Board, and having kind of people go and vote where other people were. And folks that know me know how serious I take public service, and how I don't believe that this is a not-for-profit Board. We are elected officials, and we're public servants, and that transparency is important. The second one was when I read some of the policies of other districts, and one of them highlighted that if someone was going to call in, it needed to be in a public place, and it needed to be posted and accessible to the public. And it dawned on me when I read that, the risk that calling in, which is new to me, in the Legislature you're not allowed to, so I hadn't experienced it until I got to this body, the risk that the Body holds in not knowing who's in the room on the other side. Now, I have to say, I'm probably more sensitive to this than others, because I served during a dark time in our Legislature. But I really think to be trans, I think to work best as a group, we all need to be together. I know that that can't always happen, but I think the transparency to the public of who's in the room when we're having conversations, even at break, you know, who are we talking to and who's in the room, is very important. The third point in this policy, and where it came from for me, was when I was President, and I looked at the unexcused and excused, there was no guidance, which really, I think, puts the Body at risk for a President, and we are lucky to have a history of a Board that hasn't been political, and Presidents, I think, that have done the right thing. But of someone just randomly deciding someone could be excused or unexcused, and there's no guidance, and that guidance is solely to the President, which I think is unfair to the President and unfair to the Body. Each of us are elected, and we really report to the public. So with that, you'll see, so I laid out kind of my thoughts, so people would know where I was coming from, the idea that a quorum should be four members that are present, that in meetings where we're going to make decisions. So for me, those are regular meetings, special meetings, and executive sessions, because we do make, you know, decisions, we've had hearings, and executive session, and other things, that you can't call in. If you're going to participate and vote, you need to be there. You'll see on the last bullet, on these next two, unless the Board chooses otherwise, because there's always unforeseen consequences in situations that you may want to have a different policy for a specific instance, or group of instances, or a topic. We were in executive session on the superintendent search, that took a lot of different crazy times, so that was kind of my thought between, behind a topic. But that that vote will be in public, that we're saying, we're going to waive this policy in these situations. And the final one is to provide the Board and the President and the public some guidance around what type of things someone can be excused for. So it's very objective, there's no subjectivity to any Board President, any Board President. And again, or that can be waived, and that's a public notice, and we come and we decide, here's an instance where we need to waive that. This is not without unintended consequences, and every day I think about more of them. I think it highlights another risk that I came up with, actually with the help of Mr. Higgins today, that in our policies right now, we talk about a majority of votes, we don't talk about four. And we really should, and I'll talk to you, Tam, but we really need to consider, regardless of anything here, that nothing should pass this Board unless it has four votes. So you shouldn't be able to have five people here and have something pass three to two. I just don't think that's the right thing to do. So, that issue. There's the issue of, we have a very transparent workforce, so will this impact the folks that can serve? If you're up on the slope, does that mean, and your flight doesn't get in, and you, you know, it, does that mean that you wouldn't be able to serve? And I think those are really important, meaty things to think about. So, I am, I have put something in front of you, as I said in here, I know it's not perfect, and I take no offense at people not agreeing with it, or the Board saying, we don't want to go there. But I thought it was important to put in front of you, and at least get some initial thoughts, and wonder what other research the Board wants done, and I can take the lead in doing that if we want to move forward. So, with that, I have my pen ready to take notes.
I think that this is important, that we just are able to talk about what we might want to see in policy. Like Gretchen said, there's lots of consequences, intended and unintended, on something like this, and a lot of ifs, and probably, we're not going to come up with something that's perfect, and we don't have anything that's perfect right now either. It is maybe something that we need to address, so the only way we're going to be able to get started on that, I guess, is just to put something on the table, and get feedback, and talk about what we may want to see before we go about drafting that. Kathleen? Okay, Pat, you're next. Kath-
I'll look for my office.
Okay, go ahead, Kathleen.
I just wanted to comment regarding, I think this is a good direction, definitely something we need to talk about. The unintended consequences that you had mentioned, I personally don't consider north-slope travel and not being able to get in as something, I mean, I think that's something that a person who chooses to work on the slope, they make that choice, that they're, because it's really, for my two cents, it would be difficult to be able to do both and plan any kind of public life around that. That's just a choice that's made. That's a choice that I made very early on, and I have no problems with that, if you want to call it unintended consequence. I think it's a, it's a matter of the job, and a person choosing that job, that's one of your decisions when you make, when you make that job call.
Pat, go ahead.
I think there's a lot of issues associated with this. I'll start off with Gretchen's comment about the politics of the issue. It wasn't always that way. When I got on the Board, it was a very split Board somewhat. People were concerned that I would be supportive of a split type of politics involved in the Board. I wasn't. I don't think anyone would ever say I was, and I haven't been. And, but I do see where this type of language and this type of change can result in that. Let me say first that the President of the Board establishes the agenda. The agenda can be established so that key issues are voted upon when they know that individuals may not be there, or changes to it, and limit their participation in it. So right off the bat, you have a political issue where you have lack of full voting. I think that's a significant issue. And I think that's a problem. I don't think you really want to go to the point that you say that you have to have four people there, and if you've got six people, and they, and you've got a, you know, or five people, and you've got a three-two vote, you can't continue on with your agenda. I think that's a problem, and I think it creates an issue. I do think it creates an issue for people working, that does require travel. I think you've got a lot of people who live in a mobile society, and that's it. You haven't seen this issue come up within the Assembly. The Assembly last meeting, as I understand, from Gretchen yourself, had two members that weren't there, but they functioned adequately, and they continue to do their job. It may be something that I recognize you may not agree with, or others may not agree with, but it's been consistently done that way. So, the question becomes one, is it a solution to a problem, or is solutions looking for a problem? The limited voting is a problem. I think engagement is an issue. I understand why they put in language to talk about excused absences, because if somebody is taking a day off because they've got a event going on that's significant, they let people know in advance so they can schedule around it. They don't want to show up saying you're unexcused, as if you made no efforts or anything else to make arrangements. I think someone working two weeks on, two weeks off on the slope, who spends two weeks full-time doing things with the school district, and is not there for a Monday meeting, suddenly told they can't vote, and you're saying they shouldn't be eligible to be considered a candidate, would be a problem. I ran against a candidate that's a pilot, that intended to participate that way, and bragged about the issue of the technology, and it wouldn't be any big thing, he would Skype in from another location. Confidentiality is an issue, but I can tell you that you can get a copy of the tape associated with a confidential meeting. We're obligated to keep it confidential, or we can share what was said in there, if we're going to violate confidentiality. There's a lot more concern than thinking that someone is out there with a roomful of people, because then you're going to get it completely caught, and you should be kicked out of office if you violate confidentiality. I think that's an important issue. Engagement is the issue. The other one is timing on this, you know, it's similar to the other issues. Can you pass things down to limit participation for people already in current office, or is this something coming up for future people, for future individuals that may want to run? I think there's some legal issues there that I feel very confident about, that ought to be considered from a timing standpoint. But I think we are living in a technology age. You- But I think we are living in a technology age. You've got meetings in businesses, and I used to, in Southeast Alaska, handle human resources for 14 small communities, and did everything with video conferencing. It's very common. Is it ideal? Maybe not, but from an actual cost standpoint, not a particular case, it had a lot of benefits, and you had very good communications. If there's issues about who's on the other side of the phone, first of all, that's being established anyway by secure email accounts, for phone numbers or addresses or where to be contacted. And if there was any concerns, the best way to do is to look and say, we need more technology here. I think Skyping is critical, I've said that before. I think that's important for when people are traveling. I am obviously traveling at this point in time, Anchorage is home, but I am traveling a lot, I'll be back again in October. And would I expect to be without voting during this period of time? No. Would I think that the board could move in this direction for somebody currently on the board? No. But I think that's really what this issue raises, and is intended to raise. I think we've been nonpartis, we've worked together good as a board, and we need to keep it on a non-political basis, but I can see the day coming when it gets that way. I don't want that to happen. We've got to keep education up front, we've got to worry about the kids first, and we've got to make sure that what we're doing is important for education. And say, focus on the most important issues, because we have underachieving schools, we have achievement gaps that are just unacceptable, and we're not making progress academically. And now we're focused on trying to decide how many votes cannot be counted during an issue about whether it's lunches, or three-year actions, or anything else. You've got all these things out there that are going to be along those lines. If we want to look at this issue from a technology standpoint, I applaud it. I think we need to do that. I also think that you do not want a meeting without a majority of the board present. I think you need four members physically present, and I think that was a great suggestion from the superintendent that they had elsewhere. I like that. But as you see throughout this recommendation that Gretchen has, lots of places have done it the way we're doing it, and there isn't a problem. The Assembly has never viewed it, and individuals who have traveled extensively have managed to do it without, other than for political purposes, on the election, hasn't been a problem. And they've reelected. So I just urge you to think about the message that you're sending, the fact that we're focused on education and we're not being distracted. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Tam?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. One, a question probably for the staff. In terms of technology, it seems to me that we need to do some investigation into whether Skyping is possible, where we could see on this screen to my right, the person who was calling in, or a split screen if there were more than one person. I just came from a presentation this morning where an ASD grad is running a company, an international company here in Alaska, using Romanian workers as his programmers, who are managed by a Dutch associate in Amsterdam, working for a partner in the other state. And so obviously, we are already, that was a perfect example of a multinational enterprise being run right here from Anchorage using technology. The other piece, some of the unintended consequences that I'm a little worried about is, I go back to my teaching days, where I had students show up on a very important test day, very, very sick, because they didn't want to miss the test. And as much as I respect all of my colleagues, if you're deathly ill and yet there's an important vote, I would hate to have you showing up here infecting all of us and the public because you were not able to call in with a vote. So those are some of the, you know, the concerns I have of our unintended consequences if, on very important things, particularly on budget votes and things like that. So just wanted to make those comments and ask if we could get some feedback from staff on what our technology possibilities are.
Ms. Mackey? Over here.
Sorry. Heather. If I can address that, Jane Brokman and I were talking about that very issue this afternoon, and in terms of Skyping in, and we've determined that it is feasible, it is something that we can do. We can install Skype on a computer such as the one right here that is connected to the laptop right now, and use that. The board member who is Skyping in would have to have Skype installed on their computer as well. Keep in mind, Skype is a free service, and you do get what you pay for. It is not the most reliable, but it is an option if the board chooses to pursue that.
Natasha?
This is a very interesting and difficult subject to address. A few feelings, a few of my feelings is the reality, much business is done by Skype and video conferencing. I know with the Rasmussen Foundation, we are giving millions of dollars to the small communities up north, particularly Kautsebu, Barrow, Nome, and Bethel, to create a more robust educational video conferencing availability for adult education. And so that's being done all around the states, so it doesn't make any difference whether it's global and Dutch, it could be even in the state of Alaska. So that's happening, and it is effective. However, we have an issue of business versus public service. Are they the same, or are they different? Do we have to elevate the communication because we're public service, and we're not in business, per se, and we're not, excuse me, private education like a college, like I referred to earlier? So that remains to be seen. I can't answer that one right now. The second issue is, I don't particularly care for the comparison of a slope worker to someone who's in Mr. Higgins' situation, because a slope worker, if you will, generally is, depending on his rotation, is generally a two or two, and he's here as often as he is not here. And there, Mr. Higgins' case, he's gone for very extended periods of time, which leads me to my next point of, you have meeting attendance, and then you have community engagement. On one hand, yes, we could have Skype, and we could have video conferencing, and if we chose to do votes via the phone, that's one thing. But the school board is so much more than that. I will be planning on visiting the Eagle River Schools, I'll be going to Rotary, we will be engaging, we went to the King Career Center last week, we did all sorts of things. To be an effective school board member, and I think we've got to kind of talk about this in a greater sense, not only should you be attending the meetings, but you should be engaged in the community as well, and you cannot do that if you have extended period of time that you're absent. I don't know if we can create the policy to address both those issues. I think that it seems to be on the table right now is meetings, but it is a broader issue that we should discuss. One of the things that, and I will make one recommendation, and it is merely a thought, it is what it is, that in many of the organizations that I serve, there is an allowable of about 25% of absences. Now, we can bicker whether they can be excused or unexcused, or you can just simply say, you've got 25% of the meetings that you can miss for any reason at all, whether it be a death in the family, or whether you're traveling on school board business, or whether you're in the Marshall Islands, or whether you're up on the slope. After 25%, then there will be consequences, and we can discuss what those consequences may be. That is just a starting point, and we can go from there.
Mr. Smith?
I think I heard at the beginning of the presentation that you haven't really looked at the legal aspects. You run for this office under a certain set of criteria, and in the middle of your three-year term, you change the criteria, and that's the one thing that's puzzled me, because I think the attorneys have wrestled with that concept, is, you know, how do you, you know what the rules are going in, you know, would something like this have to be, you know, an effective date three years from now, or at some point where everybody that runs knows that they're running under that set of guidelines? Because I think that's the one issue we're going to have a problem with, in that we did not have this rule. Person gets elected, you know, goes off for two months, three months at a time, and communicates via Skype or whatever. I'm not sure we, I'm not an attorney, but I don't, not so sure that we can impose a new rule until everybody's fallen under it. So that'd be my only concern, because it's difficult under the arrangement we have now. And maybe, you know, maybe what we need to do is get a little more technologically set up, where either our computers can also pick up the signal that we can see. For me, I mean, I like sitting in this spot here, I've been here before, but I kind of like this spot, but it's going to mean I've got to turn and crank around to try to watch somebody on, you know, on the screen, so maybe we need another screen there, so we're not, you know, twisting around in our seats. But I'm glad we're talking about it.
You'd like to give me your two cents, Madam Chair?
Well, I do think, I mean, I've thought about this a lot, and it is very, very complicated to come up with something that really works in all situations and that's fair. I think it's going to take more discussion, and it's going to take some advice from legal counsel on what we are able to do, and maybe even some advice from Council of Great City Schools. However, I do feel that when you're elected official, that people have the reasonable expectation that you will, for most of the time, be in the place that you were elected to serve. And at times, there are jobs and also personal instances where it's, you're no longer compatible with your elected service. And as much as possible, I, well, I think we do need to keep personalities out of this in current situations, and look at this as something going forward, what makes the best sense for the school board. So I think we have a lot to think about, a lot of if's, and but's, in coming up with something that we may or may not end up passing.
So let me, I'm going to go over some takeaways of things I owe the board, and some things that the board needs to think about. There's one thing that I didn't, two things that I didn't say that I would like to bring up. One, I think when you're discussing these items, the time to do it is when the board isn't political. Because when the board is political, you're doing it for the wrong reasons. We have a wonderfully functioning board right now of people that work really hard. And so in my mind, it's the perfect time to do it, not when you're storming and you're 4-3 on every vote, and you can't all get along. That's a personal belief. The second one, to Tam's health question, I meant to mention, it is my belief, and it is probably how I was reared, and, but, you know, I missed seven weeks of session because of bedrest with my first pregnancy, and I would have loved to vote. I was sitting in bed in the middle of winter with my laptop and my cellphone and gavel to gavel, and I was bored, to say the least, and going a little nutty. That said, the best thing in the world was that I couldn't participate, because I needed to focus on getting better. So yes, should someone be able to call in when they're not healthy because it's an important vote? Sure. But at the end of the day, if it's a death, if it's health, it's this and that, the great thing about public service is, you should always be taking care of yourself first. So I think I have mixed feelings about that. I get that, but I think I come from a different angle from my experience going through that. So the takeaways I have that I owe the board is to explore a few of the legal issues that came up tonight, explore maybe some stuff with Council of Great City Schools and legal counsel, where that falls, to work with Jane a bit more on, Jane and Heather on technology, and what would that mean, what would it cost, how would that look and feel? So we could discuss that. And what I heard I need the board to think about is this issue in general, and where each person stands on it as a concept. Natasha put out, well, I think it could be a very simple solution, which is just, here's the number of absences you get a year, and we don't care why they are. I've missed a meeting because of work. I don't call in. If I've got to be gone for work, I've got to be gone for work. Life's about choices, and those are the ones I make. So maybe a simpler policy is just saying, here's the number of absences regardless, and that makes it simpler. So I'd like folks to think about Natasha, think about this policy, think about Natasha's suggestion, think about, should we make it that, what I said at the beginning, the four votes, that something should have to pass by four votes, or not? If folks could think about that a little bit along, I've heard good things about the quorum issue. And, I'm trying to think if I missed anything. And besides the technology issue, kind of the issue about confidentiality. I mean, at the end of the day, we govern ourselves and the ethics of each other. And so I think Pat made a very good comment about if someone's breaking confidentiality and they're on the other side, but they're not being honest about what's going on and keeping that confidence. And I think that's a good, meaty thing for folks to think about. So that's what I took. Did I miss anything that I owe the board, or that board members want folks to think about? And my request is, Ms. Mackey, that we could discuss this at the next meeting, and I could try to get things for the board for the next early meeting, if possible. Anything I missed?
Well, I'm sure we're missing a lot, because there's any number of different ways that we could go with this, but I just, I wanted to put one more thing out there with Natasha. What you had put out there as a thought is that you have 25% of, you know, absences excused or non-excused. But what I'm wondering about is with the open meetings law, you are considered present if you call in. So that kind of throws a quirk in that.
My feeling is, of those 25%, you can choose to call in if you wish, but to still be part of the whole momentum. But you can either vote or not vote, depending on how you feel. 25% is just a start, and it's also, you can eventually decide whether 25% unexcused, and then you can have unlimited excuse, depending on, you know, whether you're on bedrest for eight months or something like that. I don't know, it's just a start. So take it from there and rip it apart.
But I could be gone for several meetings, but still be considered present, so that wouldn't be an excused or an unexcused.
Right now, you would.
Right.
But not in the future if we adopt this.
And that's where we need to get advice legally, is if this was, would even be something that would hold up because of the open meetings law.
So I've got two things. One is open meetings, and one is effective date. I was assuming, because the legislature doesn't allow you to vote, and they fall under the same open meetings law, so, but that was an assumption on my part, so I will check both on effective dates that Pat and Don brought up, and the open meetings issue, and kind of where we are with that. So, thank you.
Okay, so lots of questions to be answered. We have maybe a jumping off point here, and please, board members, give this some thought, because if anything that we move forward with is a significant, would be a significant change, and it's going to take everybody's input. Okay. Pat, did you have anything else that you wanted to add at this time?
I guess my only comment is that, I think it was in 1991, we had somebody who was out for a year with an illness, participated by phone, and was in a, if the intended consequences, that soon would not be able to be represented, then understand it. Well.
So that brings us to item number three under Board Presentations, which is the Council of Great City Schools' recommendation on legal counsel. Dr. Ratter, would you like to lead that?
Yes. As the board is aware, one of the recommendations by the Council of Great City Schools was that the board consider the option of going to legal counsel inside. We thought it appropriate to go ahead and have that discussion this afternoon as we move forward, and give, actually, give me the direction to look at job descriptions, look at what others' best practice are doing, and at that point, bring some information back to the board. I would envision that being a part of what we decide to do as we move forward with any of the, with any of the changes that we might make in how we organize inside. of the, with any of the changes that we might make in how we organize inside. The Board expressed the desire to have that discussion this afternoon and I put it on the agenda and thought it appropriate if any Board members feel that they would like to have any input as we begin. Is this something that we want to do? Is it something we want information on now? It's very similar to what Ms. Guest said a moment ago. Do we want, as a group, to start the discussion? I'll collect the information, very similar to what she has done inside of the policy question, and then bring information back to you. Or, at your pleasure, we can have something ready to go as a job description and, you know, describe where we're going downstream quickly. So, I would await the Board's direction on that and what your sense is in relation to how we need to proceed.
So, I'm only slightly opinionated on this, as with most things. We've been talking before Jim came on board, a while of this, and it started to give some folks a background in the budget conversation and an RFI I asked for, which is out of the, I think it was $1.2 million that we spent on outside counsel. How much of that was for general use versus litigation? And I'll never say that you should insource litigation. I mean, that's just, that's a specialty. And out of that RFI, it was about a half a million dollars that we spent on general counsel. It was my experience as President that there's just a lot of small stuff that you've got to take to legal counsel. I mean, Jim's contract, that wonderful appeal we had on sports and time and things that we'll never get that 20 hours back, and other things where you need, that I felt guilty, honestly, as President, because I knew how much it was costing us and it was fairly general legal stuff, but I'm not an attorney and I shouldn't have been playing one in those situations. I think it's a cost saver. I would love to get staff's opinion on that. I'm also in this, I think one of the, if not the smartest person in the room is Mr. Graff, and I think I've told him that. But, I don't believe it is all a good use of his skills and time nor any staff members who's not of counsel to be writing policy. Content experts are one thing. And it's been the history of the district that that position writes policy, except for things that we outsource. And I know before I got on the Board and was dealing with policy issues, it was confusing and they were referencing not necessarily the right things and, you know, to me, it's just, that's what in-house counsel does. They write your policy, they make sure you're aligned, and they also oversee the bills of your legal counsel. As someone who has to sign off on those at work, I don't know how long a brief takes or should, and nor should anyone expect staff that aren't legal counsel to know how long something takes. And that has nothing to do with JDO. I think they've done a great job representing, but it's just one of those risk areas that we're this big and we don't have our own attorney. And I think we're, I think we've got enough for one FTE and it won't cost $500,000. Even Mr. Friedman, when he was sitting on the Board, was an ALJ and, you know, was being paid as a state attorney under $100,000. So, I think in this town, it's reasonable and I think would be better for the Board and Jim knows. I'd like to see it sooner rather than later, but sometimes I move a little fast, so if there's a reason to slow down.
And I would appreciate from staff, in this research, is what other districts of our size are doing and how they're handling this. So, back to the counsel for that question, please.
Madam Chairman, I, Madam President, I'm sorry. We're big enough that we should have an in-house counsel for the routine, day-to-day legal issues. And when we get into a real serious issue that requires the expert, we can hire that out and I think we'd be a lot better off. So, I would urge that we start looking for an attorney in-house.
Kathleen?
I might agree with what Don said, no reason, and what everyone else has said to this point. I think we should pursue legal counsel. I think it would be a cost saver, as well as would give us expertise in the district as well, which is also a benefit.
Pat, did you have anything that you wanted to add on that?
Yeah, I guess I'll throw it in. You know, as I look back at some of the large corporations I worked at, most of the time, legal became a kind of a orchestra leader for outside legal to be handling cases, anyway. And so, it's kind of like the outsourcing or insourcing. I really think a good careful analysis of what you're getting for it in return is important. I've seen too many times, you get an in-house attorney, they're really not capable of doing all the various things you want to do anyway, and so, it's being done by others and you've got somebody there that may or may not work out the best. But, I would, I would just, before I attach one approach to the other, I just want a little bit more, you know, what we would really be bringing in-house, because a lot of it, I think we would still have to have specialty attorneys handling.
And I would only add that clearly, we already know what the Council of Great City Schools, other schools are and the council are doing, because that's what they recommended for us is to do this. But, what I would want to know is how it would really be structured in terms of who would the council report to? I'm thinking, I could be incorrect, that they would work for the organization, which is ASD, and not particularly for the superintendent or for the Board, but for the organization. But, that brings a question on really, who do they report to? If anybody? I don't know. That seems kind of unclear to me. So, that would be a question that I would ask of the council, is how other districts structure that position? Are there any more questions or comments on legal counsel? Okay, that brings us to the fun stuff, the long-range financial plan. Mr. Stitler?
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. We wanted to give the school Board as a whole a quick and very brief update on the long-range fiscal plan. The Budget and Audit Committee did get a fairly in-depth overview late last, or, excuse me, two weeks ago, almost. I wanted to first introduce Mark Foster. Mark Foster is the consultant that's been developing this for us. He also will be finishing up this contract work with the district in the next week or so, and then will actually transition into the district as the new leader for the Office of Management and Budget, replacing Marie. So, what we'll do is we'll go very quickly through essentially the same slideshow that we presented the Budget and Audit Committee meeting, at the Budget and Audit Committee meeting. We don't have all the time that we had in that meeting, so this is going to be quite brief. And what we'll do is we'll actually ask to be able to run through the whole pitch before we entertain any questions and answers in order to make sure that we can hit all the key points for the Board as a whole. As you guys know, this is a long process for us. The fiscal plan is going to take us some time to work close to perfection. It will likely never become perfect. Ms. Guest has helped us champion that, I think. But, the key pieces and where we're at with it at this point, first, we developed this past spring essentially the key fiscal policies that the district has acted on historically, and that was a document that the Board voted on. This is going to be something that we will look at on an annual process as a component of that long-range fiscal plan. The piece that Mark is helping us develop is the, essentially, the revenue outlook and the key cost drivers, or where we're spending and why we're spending the money that we're spending. And looking at both of those items, essentially, we can identify the gap between those two. And that's really the work that we are going to just jump very briefly into today, is talking about how we get into that gap and then how we identify the risk associated with that gap and then start talking about what we do to mitigate it.
Ms. Mackey, can I, to help hopefully a little bit, there may be things that the Board wants to do a deeper dive on, and so, what the committee and working with staff thought is that to do the overview now, to ask questions, and then to give the feedback of, here are topics that we want to go into at other early meetings, because some of them will take, can take, well, I think the Board spent about, the committee spent about three hours on this. So, some of them can get pretty meaty. So, think about things also that you would like as topics in future early meetings.
All right. Thank you very much. I think Chad hit the highlights on the overview and really the key takeaway that we're trying to get to in the financial plan. What's the revenue outlook? What are the expense drivers? And what gaps arise based on those trends? And how do we manage them? That's really what we're looking for. Some of the key fiscal policies you're aware of, revenues match expenses. We've got one-time funding and one-time expense is something we've been working on. And now, we have sort of an evolving issue of how many times does one time have to occur before it really is a recurring expense? Briefly, what I'll touch on today, we're looking at an enrollment outlook that drives the total cost of service and drives the formula funding from the state. We'll look at state, local, and federal funding history and outlook. We'll look at some expenditure history and outlook by the big cost drivers of salary and benefits and the associated productivity. And then, we'll think about how we characterize that gap. There's a gap in money and inevitably, we get down to, how many people is that involved if we have a gap? And then, how do we manage it? We're starting with top-down enrollment projections and we're getting really into the detail of modeling each type of service driven by the enrollment, and that's really what we're starting with here. When we drill down into that enrollment by individual school, I think it's really useful to keep in mind, there's considerable variation in the enrollments at the schools, while our projections and the total number are very accurate. When we get down to the school level, we get a lot of variation and we just want to be mindful of that when we deploy resources. We want to be flexible enough in our process that we're meeting the enrollment requirements in the fall with our resources and not thinking that we've figured it out a year ahead of time, when the enrollment may be very different on a school-by-school basis. One of the things we're working on is, let's understand our current cost structure. How much service are we providing, not only for the general students, but various special services? English language learners, various bed programs, the gifted? What might be required for academic intervention? So, what cost is associated with that? And we're going to work through and understand those costs and try and develop some easy-to-understand needs-based weighting. On the revenue outlook, just a quick history for those who may not have remembered and lived through all of this experience. I think there are a few in the room who have. The oil prices, as you may recall, from the '70s into the '80s, on to the '90s and more recent experience, we did enjoy some tremendous run-ups in oil price right about the times the pipeline came on, followed by the crash. And then, we had a long period of relatively flat prices followed by the recent run-up. And one of the things I'm going to look at on the risk side is thinking about what that crash can teach us about potential risks if oil prices don't stay in the range that perhaps they've been in. Looking across that same time period, you know, the key thing is, here's education funding over time, total state spending on top of that, and then the percentage of the state general fund that is education. Fairly stable across the spending regimes, and then, as the oil prices came up, we spent on other things. If I measure average daily membership, dollars per average daily membership and inflation, adjust that, you get to see the run-up in the '80s with the oil prices going up and the spending, and then this long period where we've gone through a trough and now the uptick again in the last few years. When we go back in time and look at the '80s in particular, I'm looking '84, '85, '86, as you may recall, the oil prices came down pretty hard in '86. What happened to education funding? Now, this is in real dollars. The foundation formula got trimmed and you'll see the supplemental pension support also got trimmed and zeroed out at that point. And I think those are some of the key things to keep in mind. If you get stressed, you can see reductions in formula and reductions in supplemental pension support based on the historic record. We'll just run through that. Now, the other interesting thing that happened in the '80s is that the local mill rate got adjusted as, we got stress in the economy in '86, '87, '88, and the valuations of property, let me see if I can get it, went down from the peak, and the mill rate went up to preserve the level of funding to the local school. So, the school district, the local contribution went up from about 15%, 16% on up to almost 30% over that time period of stress. So, the local government, in essence, rode in and helped out and helped preserve level of funding from the point of view of dollars per student. We now have a change in the foundation formula, SB 182, which effectively caps the mill rate, which will preclude you, I think, in effect, from being able to draw on this resource in the future if you get a stress. So, it's a risk to consider. If I look at the State of Alaska Department of Revenue forecast in the spring, on April 5th, the outlook when the legislature was adjourning, it looks like we have a fair amount of headroom. We have general fund revenues in the middle bar, the expenditure operating budget and capital budgets that were projected at that point in time. So, you've got revenue over expense. It's very interesting to note that all you have to do to change that picture is look at oil price futures. And I just happened to run the analysis when I first started this project in July of 2012 on the NYMEX futures. If you run those oil prices through that revenue model, the general fund revenue is lower than the expense projections that are out there. The takeaway is that the oil revenues can be quite volatile. So, we may not have a big surplus of revenue over expense in any given year. It could swing back the other way quite easily. Federal revenue outlook, as many of you know, the current sequestration process is allowed to run the automatic spending reductions that are current law, the reductions there will range from about 6% to 9% in our federal funds. So, that's the revenue side. On the cost side, just quickly, we talked a little bit about enrollment. Now, we're going back in time, the early '80s, all the way up through the current total student enrollment. And reminder here on the special ed intensive and self-contained, the enrollment numbers that are in the budget books as we track back in history changed as a result of what was classified and under the foundation formula considered special ed intensive and self-contained. So, that highly leveraged revenue source in the foundation formula is one that has from time to time been adjusted. So, it's just mindful of another volatility that's in the revenue stream. Now, when I look at the primary cost drivers, I've got salaries, benefits, purchased services. I'm going over that same time period in nominal dollars here, and so, you can see the salaries and the benefits. And we're going to drill into this a little bit. And I made a note here, I'm looking at the total cost of service, and you may have noticed that on Slide 2, and let me tell you what that means. When I say total cost of service, that's all of the costs of doing business, regardless of whether or not they're funded by various sources. So, for example, pensions... So for example, pensions are funded by lots of sources, including a supplemental from the state. I've included all of those expenses in here along with all of the revenues, not just part of it.
And the reason that's important is that supplemental for the retirement systems is over $120 million for the school district this year. So it has a significant effect.
Average salaries without the benefits over time, fairly flat until the most recent run-up as the oil prices came up and funding came in. When I look at the aggregate benefit rate of health, TERS, and PERS, you'll see that benefit rate for much of the historic period from the late 80s into the 2000s is around It is now approaching 80% as a result of health, TERS, and PERS growth. And that's, those are the three primary drivers. Chad?
So essentially, what that means is that historically, of the total salary and benefits combination, salary back in 19, you know, late 80s was about 75% of that total package. It's now inverted, and it's now about 25%, less than 25%.
When I split and look at the functions, salary and benefits, by the various types and the budget presentations that we do, teachers clearly dominate the equation. And I'm here looking at dollars per student FTE. So you can see the teachers largely driven by the benefit side of the house are approaching $9,000 per student. When I look at salary and benefits as a percentage of the total salary, teachers are on this axis. And you'll see the moving average in black, teachers ranging from about 70%, as high as maybe 73, and then back down in more recent times. Teaching assistants running up over that time period. And principals staying, and admins staying relatively flat. Takeaway from all that is really the key, I think, understand that revenue picture, in particular the state revenue outlook, and understand the supplemental pension funds and what the outlook is for that. And to come on the cost side and understand that pensions and health are a significant driver of your expense picture. And if we have a downturn, and history repeats itself in some fashion, I think we have a significant risk on managing the cost structure that we have.
So that's the quick overview of the plan as a whole. And again, in a relatively short timeframe, it's a lot to take in. But I think what's, Mark did a good job of highlighting those key factors that we will want to focus on, most importantly, inside of the long-range fiscal plan. That being the dramatic effect that the pension that the state is currently paying for has on our cost of service. As you know, we have a, we're well over 85%, almost 90% salaries and benefits in how we deliver service in the district. That's pretty standard or within the range of the norm inside of all similar-sized school districts. So we don't see that going away. And again, the pension obligation is much higher on the teacher's side. So what we need to, what we need to take into account is while we are getting that fully funded at the state level now, as we look out into the future with the volatility of oil and the state economy with the dependence of the school district on the state and the city, what might that mean for us? And what do we do to mitigate that risk inside of how we structure ourselves? There was a short, quick reference also to the effect of Senate Bill 182 and the limit on the city's ability to fund us the way that they had funded historically, both in recent history, funding up to the local tax cap, but also historically, when the state revenue crashed, the city was able to help carry the district at that point. And that's no longer the case. So those are significant risks that we'll be working towards in the future. Wanted to get in front of you, give you a very quick overview. And we've got certainly some time to answer some questions and be happy to follow up on future conversations and presentations.
I just had a few questions. First of all, great job. And a couple of things that I caught this time, and I've had the benefit of spending more time, those of us that are on the committee. One question, so a handful of questions, Mark. One, the variation by school, which I thought was fascinating and really goes to how do we resource schools appropriately? When you say there's variation, is that variation year-to-year or month-to-month? Do we have an issue where the variation is really, we're seeing significant swings within a year? Or is it really year-to-year that we have to be careful that we're resourcing schools appropriately?
I looked at it specifically from the point of view of budget development. So I'm looking at projections and actuals and the variation between the projection that we made and the actuals that came in being significant on a school-by-school basis. So that was the focus for that presentation.
Okay. So that's on the year-to-year budget? Okay. Next question, and I, is the pension supplemental that we get, is that statutorily required? Do we know?
It is currently statutorily required. It would take a change in statute for the legislature to fund it otherwise.
So that mitigates our risk somewhat, only because you have to get 21 and 11. So it can't just be a budget item at the last, well, it can be, but yeah, okay. It's a different problem or a different risk, I should probably say. Okay.
The state has handled it a couple of different ways, and it's probably not material to the whole. But over the last five or six years that it has been here on the books, at certain points, they have, early on, they funded to the total percentage. And we would have, our use of service would have required a supplemental in order to pay the statutorily required rate. And that did not happen. So we essentially were, the retirement systems were short-funded for those years. Since then, they have been acting off of supplementals on the legislative end.
And Mark, do you know, because you had made a comment, has the BSA ever gone down? Have they ever voted to reduce the BSA or is it just the flat-lined? I mean, we get asked this question a lot on the risk of revenues. And if you, I was thinking about the late 80s.
I don't know that it has gone down in nominal terms, certainly in real terms. I just, I don't have, in my recollection, any nominal drops in the BSA.
Okay. And could one of you explain, because I still don't understand, why is the TERS unfunded liability so much larger? And if this is another early meeting, then just tell me. But the TERS liability is so much larger than the PERS liability, which is really exposing us to greater risk than if everyone was in PERS. Is there?
I'm looking forward to providing a detailed and insightful answer to that at another meeting.
All right. We'll see that one coming from IT soon. And then maybe at another early meeting, but not a priority, the special education numbers, I thought, were really interesting. And I remember that change in the foundation formula. But I wonder if that really was a change in the students that need services? So...
That is the question.
That is the question about that group of individuals. So I know it's one of the significant areas, so we'll be getting into that. But that's one of the things I'd be interested in, not just the drop, but what does that number mean? And are there students that may not be counted that still need additional services that aren't falling into one of our buckets?
Thank you. The supplemental insurance payments that we're making, is there a statute of limitations at the point where we've made up that unfunded amount, where we're done making that extra contribution every year?
I believe that the liability is about $11 billion at this time, maybe?
Yes, about 11.
So we, there's...
How many years is that?
I'm going to lunch with Commissioner Hopeberg on Wednesday. I'll ask her.
It's decades.
I'd like to request a colored, single-printed sheet of this presentation and maybe send me it also on, you know, so I could look at it on the computer. But I don't print color at home. And it's hard to look at this without color.
Yeah, I'd like a color copy, too. Other questions?
My question was on the page 22, when you said that salary is now about 25% of the total package versus benefits. Was that because of the unfunded liability?
A good portion of the run-up in the benefits is the unfunded or underfunded liability and the accumulation. That's not the only driver. Healthcare costs are a significant driver through both the healthcare that's provided under health insurance and through the pension liability as well. So those are driving through, and so it's not just an unfunded problem.
But it's a huge flip, so would that be the bulk of it?
It is the most of it.
Okay. This is some really good stuff. Thank you.
Jeannie, just so I can frame some stuff for the board and make sure that the committee stays in alignment with the board. So let me know when we don't. What our direction has been thus far is this type of work, knowing that this year we'll probably get to a 60% model. These are complicated models and that each year, and that we should start with the biggest risks and the biggest expenses and kind of finalize and focus on getting those right. And then every year, try to get better, aiming for a 90% model, hopefully in a few years. But there isn't an expectation, at least of the committee, that this is going to be done and perfect ever. But it even is not going to be done to a 90% level this year. But hopefully, we get a good, solid base. We start figuring out where those biggest risk factors are on revenue and expense and diving into those and understanding those. And then making significant progress over the next couple of years in that process. So I know it's hard when you're not sitting on a committee. So if folks have more questions about that or issues with that direction, please let any of the Natasha or Kathleen or I know, so we can keep you guys abreast.
Natasha?
That was excellent. This is very good. Obviously, Slide number 15 is very alarming. I hope that we can update that with maybe more optimistic numbers.
Numbers are what they are.
I understand that. I'm just curious to see how things change over time. Of course, you said that in July, but it's only a month. Obviously, the real work comes after this. That will keep me awake at night for the years to come.
I guess I have one more question. Because the effects of SB 182 and capping the mill rate, even if we didn't have that, how big of a problem, I mean, how much could the city actually help fill that gap? Because if we're, if the state is experiencing a huge crash, then we are here in Anchorage, too. So do you see that as being, I mean, if we didn't have the...
We really share the historic record to show that even in the past, when Mayor Fink was in office and there was a crash, that group of people who were there came in and raised the mill rate and helped the schools sort of maintain a level funding on a per-student basis.
And so I can add, and those of us who lived through it, and I think one of the reasons they probably did that, my guess, is that property values went down. So it wasn't giving necessarily additional money to schools, but it was trying to hold schools harmless at the local level. Since property values dropped, the only way to do that was to increase the mill rate. If we go through another time where properties value drops because of SB 182, the mill rate's the mill rate. And so then our revenue will drop as well.
All right. Slide 26 has a very colorful picture of what the possibilities are. It's hard to see it in this black and white, but if you go online, it will give you some estimates of various scenarios paired together.
Okay. Thank you. I think, thank you for the update.
Jane?
Hi there. Do you want an update on the data center move?
We do.
We're moving. Yay.
When's the city joining us?
They haven't spoken to me about that yet.
Okay. Just checking.
Wait. I would be happy to give you an insightful answer to that question.
At another time.
At another time. We're making great progress. Most of the staff now has moved into Kennedy Data Center. And all of their equipment and all of their furniture and everything is there. The server room itself has the antistatic flooring, the ISO bases, the racks are up, the cable trays. So we are pretty much ready to move the servers in. And that's about where we expect it to be at this time of year. We've changed the move-in date, as you know, from September to December. So we continued our push to get the building ready. And the building is 95% there. It will be completely ready by the end of this month. And then we're just kind of in a holding pattern until December, when we have some time when we won't be impacting the people in the schools and we can actually bring the servers down and move them.
When do you want us to come tour?
You are welcome anytime. But if you want to see really cool bells and whistles, wait until January 1st.
Well, we want to make sure we, are there any questions for Jane?
I was saying that in jest since we're supposed to be at an early meeting informal. But just in case, since I get to meet with Mr. Starr and Mr. Hall tomorrow, am I correct that there still is space if the city wanted to join us in our data center?
Yes, you are correct. We have, the server room is built in such a way that it is currently twice as large as we needed. Because that's the way the room looked in the building, we have put our racks and our servers in one side, and the other side is empty and ready for the muni if they would like to come.
And I am correct that we are under the same emergency preparedness program that they are? I know there's been concerns in the past for the municipality about being able to get on base during emergency situations, but that we figured that out. And so that barrier isn't...
Well, my understanding is that the muni runs their data center lights out, which we could also do, which means, and we can do that right now, which means that if we could not get on base, that would not preclude us from running our data center. We can still do it from an alternative location.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abbott, Ed Specs.
I'm going to kind of start this one out. I had some general comments for the board as we start this. Mike's going to give you the detail in the background. But I thought it was important just to, again, out loud, say what the purposes of the educational specifications are. It's a link between educational goals and the program design that we need in schools to deliver that. Helps us promote consistency in the schools and in the facilities. It allows us some flexibility based on program need... allows us some flexibility based on program need, and it allows us to collaborate with the board and others in the community in order to design the right type of facility based on the needs. This document and the documents that Mike's going to talk about today meet the state and municipal requirements around code, safety, structural type things, zoning and regulation. I think it's important that the board has a sense that we've done our part to make sure that we're inside of that. Our ed specs have been reviewed by the CIAC, and I have to give full credit to the board for that. The board last year said that it was, would be a real positive thing to have that outside organization review that, and Mike will discuss their feelings around that and what we did with them, which I think is really unique and very forward-thinking. What we really need from the board is an approval so that the district has in place an outline in relation to how we would redo or rebuild or build from scratch a facility. And this is a very important component inside of what the board has outlined for the staff to do in order to reassure the community that we've thought carefully about what our school should look like downstream. So Mike will give you the detail in the background around this.
Madam President, before you, there's a document from the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. This reflects the work over the summer, well, spring and summer of the CIAC. They established a subcommittee that was co-chaired by John Bolkow and Bob Griffin. They toured four buildings, Bartlett Central, Chester Valley and Airport Heights, met with principals at each of those sites, and examined the proposed ed specs against, want of a better term, the conditions on the ground in those facilities. Based on that evaluation, the subcommittee made recommendations to the full CIAC, and the full CIAC met about a week ago, and adopted the recommendation that you see before you. It's been distributed. I'm more than happy to go through it. They do make some recommendations for adjustments to the ed specs that were, the draft ed specs that were proposed, but they recommend adoption of the ed specs with those minor amendments. I also want to distribute right now, in case, I don't think you have it, there was a minority opinion developed earlier today, maybe just pass this down, by Mr. Griffin, and that, we didn't get that in time to include that in your packet, so I wanted to make sure you had that as well. At this point, we're prepared to answer questions. As we noted in the cover memo to the information we sent before the weekend, the document itself, the ed spec document itself, can be a pretty daunting pile of paper. Most of the material inside that is repetitive and it does not constitute policy-level choices that are involved in the ed specs. In fact, there are relatively few policy choices in this ed spec that differ from the previous ed spec, but there are some, and so we didn't duplicate the entire document for the board. As Jim mentioned, this is a, this is the development of ed specs on a periodic basis, approximately every 10 years. It's considered best practice, both in the state of Alaska and nationally. However, no individual choices for capital, for major capital projects are made solely on the basis of the district-wide ed specs that are, that are proposed before you today. State law requires that prior to the initiation of a cap, major capital project on a school, whether it be a new construction or a significant change in an existing one, is that site-specific ed specs are required. So in, as you recently saw with Girdwood, in June, we brought the board a recommendation for the site-specific ed spec at Girdwood, and it drew on the district-wide ed specs significantly, but there were individual choices made in that ed spec that differed from what might have been in the district-wide ed spec to take into account the various programmatic, and in the case of Girdwood, sort of the geographic requirements of that, of that school facility. So every time there's a major capital project, you will be asked to adopt a site-specific ed spec, and that will be based on material in the district-wide ed spec, but will not, will not preclude the district from including site-specific requirements in those, in advance of those major capital projects. Anyways, we're available to answer questions. The ed specs were built by a consulting team that was hired, I think, back in 2008 or 2009, and Amy Yurko, many of you have met Amy. Amy, she made a presentation to the board in 2000, in late 2010. She is available, if we need her, between now and potential board action on this, on the 6th of September. If there are detailed questions available, or myself or district staff might be able to answer questions as well.
If, if I could add one other thing, too. I went through the ed spec yesterday, and in the last, during my tenure outside of Alaska, we built 30 schools and 17 additions in five years. So I spent a lot of time looking at ed specs. I looked at what the proposed ed specs are for us and what we're going to ask the board to approve, and I can tell you, they are, they are spot-on in relation to what I'm used to seeing inside of them. The enrollment, the numbers in elementary, middle and high are consistent with what a board would want to see. There's some, there are a variety of things in there, and you might have questions today in regard to some of those things. But just from a person's standpoint that's done ed spec somewhere else, I thought that what Mike shared with me and what the committee went through and shared with him, I think we're pretty spot-on in relation to that. Most importantly, the board has an opportunity to have discussions anytime there's a major addition in any school, and this is pretty much just our blueprint to look at and to start, and the board's always engaged in this as we go downstream. Thank you.
Besides the Girdwood School, do we have schools that are radically in trouble in regards to the amount of square footage available to handle the number of students?
Well, the, I mean, in total, the district is a couple thousand slots over capacity, or under capacity. If you, we have capacity for several thousand more students than we currently have enrolled in the school district. That's not to say that there aren't individual buildings that aren't significantly overcrowded, but taken as a whole, the district has enough capacity and enough, in general, enough square footage to support the anticipated enrollment over at least the next six years. There's no provision for major increases in school size or overall capacity increase that is likely to come from the administration to deal with the enrollments that we expect over the next six years.
Continue. Are we looking at realignment of boundaries soon? Are we happy with what we got, or are we going to take on that terrible topic and bring things back to correct neighborhoods?
Well, at the board's direction, we'd be glad to initiate such a, such an effort. There's been very preliminary work that gets you to the sort of calculations I just described in terms of, at the, you know, the high-level overview of our overall capacity. But we certainly can conduct such an effort. It's, it would be a significant one, not so much from the staff's point of view upfront. It's essentially a math exercise, and we have many of the tools in-house to do so, but it will generate, as you're aware, a significant public discussion and, you know, undoubtedly absorb a lot of the board's time and effort.
To continue, the last time I looked at one of the maps, it showed population area, it looked to me like we have some really wide, diverse percentages. There's schools in southwest Anchorage that are right approaching 100% capacity, and we've got schools in the northeast that look like they might be 50, 60%, you know, used. And I think that in itself is causing some of our problems, and that, you know, I think it's unfair to jam a bunch of kids into a school where basically they're full. And then, on the other hand, you've got other parts of the community that are getting a ride that gives them a tremendous amount of square footage. And that's my biggest concern. I just, it seems unfair. I mean, I would think if, if we've got a capacity of overall 80%, we ought to be striving somehow to come to a, an 80% overall utilization of our grade schools, maybe middle school. Middle school, a little more difficult, but I would think with grade schools, adjusting some boundaries would give you a better use of a school, but it's not an area I know a lot about. But it just, it bothered me when I looked at, you know, I've got grandkids now that are out of school, but that part of town is really tight.
That is, that is the discussion for early topic, and I would anticipate, like some other things, that being sooner than later, because tied to that has to, you have to talk about program capacity, you have to talk about the real capacity inside the school, you have to talk about choice, you have to talk about how we're going to manage this in the next five or six years as we go forward. So it is absolutely an early meeting topic that's on the list that I gave you today, that is on the tip of everybody's tongue.
Mike, I have a question. When you're talking about the utilization, are you including all of the portables also in the space that those portables bring?
We do not include portables. Well, I think there's one school where that's, where there's an exception to that, that we include in the program capacity for a building. So if a building has portables, they don't count towards the program capacity of that space. So in addition to the several thousand student slots, for want of a better term, or seats that would be available, we also have the fleet of portables that are out there. And I don't have an exact count for you today. We've done, there's a recent inventory. I don't have the numbers at my fingertips, but it's approximately half of those are used in classroom-type functions, and then approximately half are used for occasional student support or for other non-classroom-type activities.
Extracurricular activity?
Office space, conference room, things like that. Some of them are occasional classroom space. Some of them are where OTPT or other sort of pull-out programs would be conducted, speech therapy, et cetera. Different schools use them in different ways. There's only one building where we've essentially made portables permanent as a part of the program capacity. That's at Sand Lake, where we, back in 2008, the design choice was made to keep five portables on-site somewhat, or semi-permanently, to support the, sort of, the special program needs in that building.
Okay, thank you.
Jeanne? Mike, I'm, I'm correct that once we do, we finalize the ed specs at the EAA, I think it's now called, the Educational Assessment-
Educational Adequate-
Adequate Assessment. Thank you. I, um, we'll be balanced off against that. So going to Don's point, so we'll get a kind of the facility condition index, what's the shape of the building, and then how it meets the, the needs, and we'll be able to look at both of those.
That's correct. In fact, we're using the draft ed specs right now as the primary tool for the EAAs that have been completed today.
Okay. First of all, because I don't see the rest of the group here, so I'll ask Mr. Griffin to please relay my thanks to the, the subcommittee for this work. Oh, there you go. Just some great comments, and really thoughtful. I found them very helpful and made me feel better so, about all of your, all of your work. So I guess my question to the administration is, when I looked at these, they seem to be really good suggestions. Are, what's happening now with, with the recommendations? Are, are we going to include those in the draft that we vote on, on the 6th? Include some, not include others? Are we going to have to discuss those on the 6th?
The, the administration generally supports all of the recommendations that were made, and so I think probably the cleanest option, and certainly it's at the discretion of the, of the board, but if the board simply adopted these amendments in total, that would be satisfactory to the administration, and then when the final ed specs were produced, they'd be produced with these amendments made.
We can write the, the item that night, the memo, to reflect that, if it's the board's pleasure.
It would be mine, but I don't know where, where the rest, just anyone. And then I had one other thing. Oh. And on, on your point, Don, and Bob, your, your opinion, which I appreciate, I, we'll get into this in the next one, but, but I see it really coming out of our discussion about choice, because I don't think we can talk about boundaries until we can talk about choice and, and that issue. So I've always seen those, those tied together, but what dawned on me, which I hadn't thought about before, was Mark's comment about how the projections change year by year in our schools. And so when we have that discussion, I'd be really interested on that historical, because the last thing you want to do is make a policy decision, the next year you have to make a different one. So that, that knowledge that, you know, we have some uncertainty about, about the variation year to year in our schools, I'll be interested when we have that conversation to highlight that a little bit more, know what risks we have around that. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. It says right here, so the ed specs will come for action on September 6th. So between now and then, the board will be given the original ed specs now to read, I assume?
The plan was to provide you just with the documents online. It's a pretty hefty duplication task. Keep going. That, that would be one. That'd be elementary, middle or high. So, yeah.
What's the expectation for someone? I mean, I would be, so I can fully vote with a, with a clear conscience and field that I've read and understood it, what would you recommend that I do when, before, between now and September 6th?
In the, if you look at the online version, there's a separate document PDF, I believe, for each of the elementary, middle and high. Each of them includes a summary-
Executive summary.
An executive summary of the impact of the ed specs, and I think you'll find that to be usefully descriptive of what's inside.
Okay. Thank you to Bob Griffith and others for going through this. Thank you for visiting all of the schools that you mentioned. And, and thank you, Bob. This was good. I read it real quick. So Chester Valley is my alma mater, by the way. And Don, you brought up a good point. Remember that everything is connected. So if we talk about capacity, there's going to be a domino effect, and we're going to talk about 15 other things. So I think it's important as a board to kind of sit together and keep in mind of, if one thing affects one thing, how is it going to affect others? And last but not least, we talked about capacity, and I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, but I did get a call today indicating that several students have moved in the last week or so due to No Child Left Behind being able to leave their schools. So Inlet View, which is a very small school and doesn't have a lot of capacity now, I think has 42 new children, is what the phone call I heard today. So No Child Left Behind, if I remember correctly, the state is asking for a waiver. I don't know what that means in terms of the kids being able to move around next year and the years after, especially if they get a waiver for, if we get a permanent waiver, especially if we get a new president and things change. So capacity, according to Bob's memo and Don's concern, that's going to be, No Child Left Behind is going to make a big issue with it. And it looks like Dr. Browder's got a comment. Looks like Dr. Browder's got a comment.
Well, I was going to say that, that the waiver for No Child Left Behind revolved around allowing us to, to measure AYP based on 10-11 data. And the, the, the option for families to choose to move around would not be impacted as we move forward. What, what principals will do, what Mr. Graff and, and staff has done and will do is we'll monitor those numbers as school starts. And we'll make decisions about how to, how to deal with migration of students from one to another and whether or not that really occurs. And we'll, we'll depend on the school principals to give us those, the data so that we can assure that we're, we have the space inside of schools for every student. Remember, utilization and capacity, two way different terms. And we'll, what, what, what we can assure the board and the public is that we'll, we'll assure that every student has a quality classroom. And, and that means if we have to add space, we can add space. But we'll look at that critically after the numbers really show. Because there's some that might be going in, from a school that we say youngsters are going to. But until everybody shows up and you get a real sense of that, we're, we're kind of sitting there waiting. And Wednesday's the day, in the next week, we'll know who's really in, in place and who's not.
While the topics come up, I guess I'll ask a question. Talk radio's been buzzing all this past week over accusations. And I, and I can't honestly answer, but I've, I've been hearing, you know, the different stations talking about the fact that parents only got noticed just a few days before they had to start taking their kids in to look at enrolling. And that really, virtually, nobody took advantage of moving their child. But the big argument that was just buzzing everywhere was the fact that we apparently had waited so long to let parents know that they had that option if they, their, their child was in a school that would give them the opportunity to move, but they never found out about it until about the time they were bringing their kids to school to enroll them. And I'm just curious, do we need to extend that process? Or have we, are you happy that, that we're okay and we're not?
We, as, in, in the memo that I sent the board and explained that, we did this year how we've done that in years gone by. And there's been no major change. And we've, we've followed the same process and procedures that we follow. One of the reasons that I think parents aren't opting for it is they're happy where they are. You know, it's a choice. It doesn't mean you have to. And oftentimes youngsters and parents are happy where they are. We could argue the merits of No Child Left Behind and AYP for a long, long time. Mr. Smith and everybody that's out there, we have some really very good schools in our community. And I think the reason that parents didn't opt to leave is because they're happy where they are. I, I've been in other places and see the same thing. The reality is No Child Left Behind is, is about somebody else's view of what quality is about. I, I would submit to you and the board that those parents are making decisions based on what they think's right for their children. And if they want to move, now they have the option of doing that. And we'll make the arrangements to, for them if they want to. I, I believe that it's more about they're happy with where they are.
And it may be, because I thought, first of all, thank you, Jim, and the staff who put that memo together. It was very, it was very helpful. And it may just be something we, we want or need to post. I mean, this is what starts, you know, three and a half weeks ago, someone says something and it, and it rolls through the, the media. But I really appreciated that response. It gave a, it was just nice to have that knowledge.
And I might add, directed towards Heather, that may be something that we discuss in one of these articles way in advance of when AYP scores are, are, final scores are given, that these, these determinations can be made, that we talk about what the process is and, and let the community know why they're being notified when they are.
I'll be happy to add that to the list.
And, and I want to thank staff, especially Mr. Graff. I actually have neighbors because I'm in my community. And my schools, my grandchildren's schools all fall in that category. And, and quite frankly, they all made, I have several that made different choices. They were, they were informed. They did get the information in time to, to make the decisions. And they kind of, some of them stayed. Some of them have gone to others. Some have chosen to go to schools they went to last year. And they're, they're going to drive themselves because they were real comfortable in those schools and, and made very good progress and their students were doing well. So, but, but, but I do agree. I appreciate, appreciate all the information. And, and I think the parents were informed and, and, and did make decisions based on a number of factors.
I, I'm unaware of what, what was said on talk radio. But if, if people were led to believe that ASD intentionally did not inform parents, that's very incorrect. Not only is it incorrect, but it would be against the law. So that would be unfortunate. We did stray slightly from the topic at hand, which is our ed specs. So Mike, do we then, will the administration, or this may be a question for Dr. Browder, is the administration going to bring us back a recommendation for a vote? Is that where we will leave this?
Yes, ma'am. We plan to bring that on September 6th. It'll be one of the memos that come before you that evening for your consideration.
Okay. And again, I would, I would echo our thanks to the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee for taking this, this task of reviewing these. It was very helpful. We are coming up against our, at the end of our meeting here. So I would like to move on to the superintendent's update.
Madam President, members of the board, just a couple of things this evening. The first item, I'll go in reverse order. The finalized draft of the district's strategic initiatives. We have updated that based on the input that the board gave us. And what we plan to do, Ms. Gess has volunteered to help us put together a memo that will come to you. As, as the board knows, and I would hope that the public knows, is that, that's a, an accumulation of information from the board and myself. And we had a retreat and talked about that. And, and the initiatives were a result of that discussion. And we have tweaked it. We've had staff input now. It's been back to the board. The board gave additional input. Now we're bringing it back. It's been finalized based on the additional input that we have. And in the interest of, of doing that together, just like we started, we will bring you an item on the sixth that we'll put together and bring to you in the interest of us continuing that real positive relationship around doing, accomplishing those strategic initiatives that we have agreed to. Any questions on that?
Since I'm writing the memo, I have one question. My thought is I was writing the memo for the front page, which is the board's strategic direction. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. That's true.
Perfect. Ms. Mackey, I do, I think this is great and perfect work. So kudos to you and the staff. And it, what it did for me is it really helped me understand, okay, under each one of these things, you know, this is what's going to happen this year. So very helpful to me, and I think very clear to the public, that when we say we're doing this, here's the things that, that we mean by it. Jim's going to know the two things that I think we may agree to disagree still on. But I will say them. And it just happened again last week, about twice a month, different people in the community say, when are you going to make the school meals better? And that means better quality. And I read the nutrition audit again last night. And I still don't feel like in those significant milestones is us really, and I do think it's a community dialogue as, as well, us tackling the quality. And maybe that means that it's not self-sustaining fund anymore. Maybe that means we got to put some general fund into it to ensure that kids have healthy, healthy, more, better than they have now. I don't want to criticize what they have now, but the sugar alone just kills me. So that's the only place in there that I'd really like to at least start the conversation or have something that reflects, and it might just be significantly improve participation and quality in breakfast and lunch. But I, I still felt like that was missing and a misalignment of what the board meant when it created that initiative. Also on school choice, I fully understand with everything going on, the timeline. I would suggest, Madam President and Jim, that we discuss doing a couple of things before third quarter. And one is have really good early meeting conversation about, when, about the issues that the board sees around school choice. Because we haven't, in my time, had that conversation, you know? So we, we can have that robust conversation mode. When we see the problems in school choice, let's list them all out. And let's really have that robust conversation. I, I also think it would bode well before we start in third quarter to survey the community. I still have an angry message at home that I need to reply to from a parent. But I know as a proponent of school choice, who, who chooses one of the choices that we have, that although those of us who love school choice love it, there's as many people out there that don't. And we need to get feedback not only from those who, who are proponents, but really bring out and make safe a conversation about those that really, really don't agree with us on school choice and want to see things differently. So I think this is a great place on Survey Monkey in our community, where we could spend a whole quarter just getting input from the community about what do they see as the problems? What do we want to be in school choice? That I think if we could do those two things in second quarter, I think we'd start off better in third quarter. And I don't think they would take a lot of staff time, a tremendous amount of staff time. Or I think we could structure them not to take a tremendous amount of staff time, but might provide us all the inputs to have the right conversation in the third quarter.
It's not a problem. Actually, we agree on most of that, as, as you indicated. And we will, we'll, we'll do our part to start that. Actually, I think sooner than later, collecting the information gives us more of an opportunity to, to react to the, what the public really wants inside of choice as we move forward. So as most of you know, I, I do believe in school choice. And I believe that we have to figure out what that's going to look like for our community. And I'm really excited about the potential there. Getting all the sugar out of the food, I've, I've still got some work to do there. And I'm going to do my part to do my best there. I will tell you that, Ms. Gess. The other item, unless there are other questions?
I was just going to say, on the school choice piece, I think, I mean, you obviously support school choice, and I think the board as a whole, probably, probably, yeah, the entire board supports school choice as well. But where we take that as a district is a large community discussion. And I don't know if Survey Monkey is even the correct way. I, I, yeah, probably a start. But we do, we, we need to decide on how we're going to gather that community input before we proceed in our board discussions, I think.
I can tell you that, that as Gretchen said, that's a start. I envision reaching out into the community and doing forums and having discussions around it and laying that information out there, allowing the public to have in a variety of places throughout the community an opportunity to talk about that. Because it is going to be, and it will create some angst inside of people as we move forward and exactly what that's going to look like. So I'm, as I said, I'm excited to have that. And that's one of the early meeting things that I sense we need to get sooner than later. The only other item for me was I was asked to come and speak on Friday at Diamond High School to the faculty as they started. And I went in and, and talked to them about Destination 2020 and the board initiatives and how we're aligned and, and what we hope to do from a curriculum standpoint and how we're going to move forward. And it was a great discussion. It spent about 15 minutes. And Cheryl gave me about 30 minutes. And we were going to have 15 minutes worth of questions and answers. And an hour and a half later, I got out of there. The questions were remarkable. They asked very thoughtful questions. And it was an opportunity for me to talk about a lot of things inside the, the district and where we are positioned to really improve. And I, I, I thought that the board needed to know that. Went today to several cross-district training sessions. One at East Early, and then I went to West. And then I came back to KCC today to talk to the CTE folks. And the message is the same, the message that we were getting under RTI and the things that staff are sharing. I think, just given some of the feedback that I've received, and I, I know many of you have heard things also, we have a, an extraordinary group of professionals that are going to step up and, and in some cases, step out there into an area that they're not familiar with. And I'm really proud of the feedback that I'm getting. Because our teachers are going to, they're not going to step. They're going to jump at this as an opportunity to help children. And I'm really very excited about it. As Heather mentioned, we went to see Frank at the ASD. Janie and I and Heather went down there and had a great.
ADN.
What'd I say? ASD, yeah, my bad. Went down to the Anchorage Daily News and had an opportunity to, to discuss what we're, what we're talking about and where we're going. And Frank asked some great insightful questions also and gave us an opportunity to talk a little bit about where we see us going. And I, I'm hopeful that he really saw some of our enthusiasm as we had the discussion. I, I have to tell you, I have to talk just a second about what Brian said. Went to the base last week. And it, it was the most powerful experience for me as a school person that's happened to me in a long time. Because something that this board has been talking about is assuring that our students have a sense of what happens next. Whether it's going into the military or going into the job market and, and looking at the things that are out there. I can tell you that our initiative inside of CTE is going to be huge for our students. Because it will give them those life skills that I know now they're going to need to be successful no matter what they do. I, I got to drive a Humvee in a combat area. And the sounds and the sights and what was going on around me was just absolutely frightening. I can't imagine what some of our military folks go through every day when they put their life on the line. And what I took away from that is, gosh, when I was a kid, you went to basic training. And if, if you were lucky, you didn't go to Camp Lejeune because that was really tough. It's about dirt, mud, and mosquitoes at Camp Lejeune. And what I saw and what I experienced was how we train people today to protect us. And I can tell you, I'm really proud of our military. And I can tell you, as a citizen, I feel a lot better about what I thought I knew in regard to military and how we manage today. So I had a great week last week and this week so far and learned of, of just a myriad of things that I think will hold value for me to help us, help our students. So Wednesday, the kids come. Our students come on Wednesday. I know they're, they're just delighted to come back. The teachers were, actually, were really excited about the potential today. And every time I talk to somebody, it's, it's another story about what we're going to do for them. But I, I just want to reassure the board that this is a really good school district. And we have opportunities to improve. And this board is going to hold all of us accountable to do that. And today's the beginning. Wednesday is really the beginning for us because our students come back. And what we do downstream with a long-range financial plan, with, with ed specs, with everything we're doing, we're going to focus it on what's right for our students. And that's from where everything that we do will come from. And I, I was really very pleased today to be able to listen to the discussion that staff had for you and the information they gave you. We will get this right. You noticed everything was on the. the screen today. If we need a screen on the other side so that the Board can see that both ways, and, and the public has an opportunity to do that also, we can do that. But what we've got to do is just continue to communicate and make sure that the President gives me a good sense of what we need to do to, to give you the information you need. So with that, Ms. Mackey, that's it. I hit it nine of 12 times, almost dead center. I, I did pretty well there. They weren't highly excited that I would even do it.
Okay, we are going to adjourn the early meeting. We will begin our regular meeting as scheduled at 6:30 PM. So the early meeting is adjourned.